What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're looking at deep stack check raising from the big blind. Can we check raise here?
So I think it's gonna check raise some, maybe if we have, I think the ace of spades will probably be the heaviest weight.
Hey, I just think it's a little bit too good to check raise. We're just like pretty high up in our range, actually.
How, how can they improve only with days on the catching for days? That's it.
No, I mean.
Nine or a ten, but.
Yeah, and also the nine and ten. Also, we, there was a second straight draw in Broadway, so we do have backdoor.
I think we check raise more with open ended stuff and some draws.
And just worse stuff, like I would be happier check raising something like even ace six or ace nine, you know?
I think the ace of spades can check raise, so if we have twelve combos, I think three of them might get in there some. No.
Oh, we nailed it, Tim.
Yep. And I was gonna say, another thing with this hand is I'm not that happy about it being offsuit and therefore we don't have any backdoor flush draws, which are really important at hundred big blinds.
But this is what we're getting for, right? A straight card with a backdoor flush and an overcard?
Yep. And ace jack is like, just good enough to call.
Holding a lot.
And the other draw cards.
What is it? Queen nine here? It's like a two card bunch.
Bunch of backdoors, three to a straight, three to a flush.
Okay.
Got some relevant blockers, I guess, the king queen.
And like overcards to the eight and the seven, like if he's, you know, he can bet small here with something like ace eight and then queen nine is quite live.
And then on the ten nine suited, you see a perfect one for, for spade for the high card, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's mainly just stuff that isn't quite good enough to peel, but doesn't wanna fold.
Well, depends.
Or it's like indifferent to calling and, and.
I don't think, well, ten nine ain't raised folk.
No, I mean, ten nine is actually, that's like getting towards value. That's just a high.
Yeah, ten nine can peel, but then it's, yeah, it's just like the best draw.
I might not even raise ten nine that much here, cuz in my mind, it's like kinda not a bluff, not value.
Nine five, I'm not sure if I find enough nine fives here.
I believe it, bear gutter. Seems okay.
Nine five, I, I don't find it. I'm like, yeah.
I'd rather do six four and just call nine five.
I think I, I will go the opposite way when I construct.
So majority call here, right? No, was it not like?
When we raised nine five, they folded like ace ten.
I was gonna say, I would just fold.
You don't peel one with like your best ace sign?
It's queen.
Not on.
Yeah, we don't trade action with ace queen, right? So.
So it's interesting, the, uh, the jack kicker is less relevant than the fact that like ace nine has better, better straight draws and that's more relevant when we're super deep. Not the opposite one, the suited ones, though.
So we call king pair? If that's.
We're done.
Are we done?
Definitely. The fact that we're mixing on the flop, if we're mixing on the flop, we're, we're folding now.
Oh my goodness, I just had to.
Alright, so never check raising this.
Never, right?
Nah, I'm not.
Just call?
Just.
Need a king or a jack, right?
We're gonna fold.
My fold eighty percent.
It's like, anybody folding here, honestly?
What was the sizing?
Why is it more? Because of the nine and the eight?
I don't know, man.
It's again about, it's, it's again about like, what hand do you want when a hundred big blinds goes in? Like.
Cause if we don't fold now, we're gonna fold turn or fold river, right?
Well, if they keep the pressure up, I guess, but I mean.
Right, I know, it's not good logic, yeah.
Feels bad to fold right now.
Look at king ten calling, whereas queen nine is folding.
Right.
Weird, right?
Yeah.
Cause even that bear gutter is worth a lot.
Or how, how is a queen here losing equity? How? Like, what, what's wrong? Ah, that's the thing, see? He's not using that size.
Which hands is he betting that size?
Nothing.
The nuts?
Aces. It's like a dot.
So what do we do against his, uh, half pot size? Just call him.
We fold most queens and it seems that nine, eight, seven, six is bad.
Seems like he has some bluffs, maybe into like king nine, jack eight, jack seven region kinda hands. Yeah, king nine, jack eight, stuff like that, so we don't want to block the nines and eights, which is junky parts of his range.
Alright, so JK, we're folding. Oh.
Pocket seven, still love it, god.
Oh.
So now we learn we can just like range bet sixty-six as the opener there.
Yeah, I knew that. I think I'm pretty much range betting fifty. That's my, I think. It feels like a check raise, just like the last hand we looked at.
It could be one?
Yep. I think it mostly, I think mostly is one.
What kind of size would you go for if you did it?
Uh, as always, I don't think there's a big difference between these two sizes. In practice, I'm splitting the difference and making it six.
Again, it's a lot of spot where we give.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like this one. It's way different than the ace six. We, like, we don't have the, the same backdoor straight potential and the king queen, it's just like we have too much other stuff that interacts with the king queen eight.
And maybe stuff with jacks and tens in it?
Exactly, yeah.
Like, Jack ten, ten nine.
Uh, it's, okay.
And again, this board kinda smacks him, so we don't get to be too out of line.
Looks like the nine is bad, right?
Yeah, I guess the fact that there's a, a Broadway gutter, that the nine's kind of the wrong place to be. In fact, maybe we'd really like to cooler him if he has nine, ten or something.
Look at this, you take queen nine versus like queen six, queen nine has less equity.
Yeah.
So the nine here is bad.
Hello, concepts, man. Be drawing to the, be drawing to the nut straight, not the, not the second nut straight, when there's this much money behind.
Yeah, so having a nine is bad here, cuz you block a bottom.
My god. These spots.
Uh, this is, think we can raise here, right?
No, I think you need two overs to raise here.
Well, upper dangler, bottom dangler?
Nah, we're too deep. I mean.
We can try once, no?
You could try, but it's gonna be a fold again.
Are we gonna funnel more of our raising range into backdoor flush draws? Uh, I think it's a huge.
It's really just gonna be over card driven, I think, on the trips board.
I think it's gonna be.
King queen and.
Like, look at that ten nine, I bet all three, that ten nine suited, I bet it's all three backdoor flush draws. Nope. I take it back.
Just everything, yeah.
Cause we wanna make like top.
The ace low is interesting, at least, though.
Even two over is not enough. You need two over and an extra equity. So why, why does it pick a king ten here? Another queen ten.
King makes better boats?
It wants, it has to, something to do with clubs?
Do they call with like queen high, jack high, ten high if we raise king high?
Then we raise, it's gonna raise what? This year, right?
Smaller, yeah, quickie.
Eight, so five.
Smaller.
Okay.
So yeah, he's still calling some jack high, ten high, nine high. Not really nine, jack high, ten high. Maybe that's the value of raising king high?
Hang on, I'm missing one size here. That's weird, you see this?
Oh, there it is.
Yeah? Okay, uh, is he folding the nines? Yeah, he's folding them.
And folding some weak aces. So I guess that's the value of raising king high?
It's weird.
Yeah, honestly, this is a pretty, pretty out of board, maybe not that important.
To get slightly better ones to fold and then some aces.
Yep.
And. Alright. JK, we're gonna fold.
I guess it kinda doesn't matter, cuz if you hit your, if you hit your pair, you're like chopping at worst the vast majority of the time.
I don't know.
Like even if you hit the king and you have king ten and he has king queen, it's still a chop. I don't know.
Yeah, this is the one. Um, do we check raise here? Probably not.
Maybe a tiny bit, probably not.
What about pocket?
Do you just fold, though?
No, I'm telling you what, we can probably check raise some here, cuz pocket deuce is gonna wanna do some shenanigans and then pocket three is taken.
Yeah, I know what you mean, cuz we're, uh, we're under, we like being under his opening range, right? So we unblock like some of his trashy, trashy c-buts.
Well, maybe check raising.
Can we just call mainly? Is, I feel like folding feels too bad, but too weak, I mean. Yeah, just call. You, you'd raise some more when you have the spade, cuz then your four is cleaner. But if we like raise this.
The first thing we looked at, it was raising without. And when, when it had it, it was more calling.
Oh. What was the board on the first one?
The board was. King, king seven? Turn ten?
Oh, that's, that's cuz it's a paired board, so.
King, king seven, yeah, we called with the king, with the three of spades. And then.
Yeah, yeah, because you, you want him to have spades and to, for the three of spades to come and then you cooler, you have like a boat and he has a flush, right? But here, the board's not paired, so we wanna have the suit.
Well, I'm not doing anything with this hand.
You sure, Tim?
I'm not sure.
I saw you getting wild with pocket fours.
You saw me through betting one time button versus cut up.
Exactly. As wild as.
No, but especially when the, in the king comes, like, he just, uh, you know, he, he improved some hands there. I wanna block some straights.
Fingers are burning.
A little too out of line. I think you could do it with king three of diamonds here, but I think it's just a pure fold again.
My fingers. Yeah, like king, king four would be nice. I'd like to have like the no gap with the straight draw. Seven X. Nope, nope.
Isn't that raising this one?
Nah.
Why not?
Me and Danny are on team king four. I want, I want an overcard to the queen.
Maybe jack seven.
Or, or I want more, more, uh, connectivity with the six five. I like jack seven. I don't like, I don't just like jack six. More like. Three's. Maybe, maybe, but I think it's too many for raising all three backdoor flush draws at the lock.
And then why not this one?
Too gappy. You only make, you only make, uh, straight draws if specifically a seven and four or specifically a four and deuce come.
Yeah, but you get so many better hands to fold.
That's true, but you can do that with jack four.
Okay, so this is a fold?
Yeah.
Isn't it?
Let's check, uh, Danny and my predictions, um, king four, jack seven.
Alright.
I'm not in love with jack seven. It might just be the gutter, like nine, seven and nine, eight. But those can call, can't they?
King four nail, king three.
King three last, but it's in there.
My instincts are good.
Yep, and, and, uh, jack seven's not going for it, but I bet you the EV is close.
Whereas, we, we said suited, right?
Yeah, and check out that raise fifty-five sign, point zero one, it's losing, so like, you know, if you wanted to find a couple extra ones, this would be an okay one to toss in.
And then, so you really want one over card, basically, is what I see, right? One over, one straight card.
Or a little bit more straight, like you don't, like ten eight is in there, which, and nine eight is in there, well, nine eight's a bear gutter, but ten eight is not a gutter, but it has a little bit more going on with multiple straight draws.
Here seems to be printing.
Yep.
Then a little bit of eight, four, seven, four.
Bear gutter and open ender. Seven, three is a gutter. Yeah, I don't know, I've seen that, like, when you have a lot of hands to pick from the, from the big blind, you can be choosy and you can use like the good ones.
But this is.
Raise this, it's a raise.
The nice sideboard, we're against CP, we're very deep.
I, my prediction about this hand is that we're gonna let it go when there's a Broadway draw out there. I think we really wanna have the Broadway. I wanna maybe do something that has like Broadway and wheel, something like king four or something.
You need something in the middle here between this and this, that can make the straight with the three and the ace.
Exactly. If it's, if it's ace ten six, we can raise here, right?
Yeah, yeah, cuz then we have a gutter to the nuts.
And then there's no wheel, wheel stuff to raise with, so we pull our lower gutters from here. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no other, you know, then we have a nutter.
Whenever there's wheel stuff, you always pull a ton from that, from the.
Oh, wow, no, no king four, no king five. Those high lows are not good enough. Though, they're very close, zero EV.
Pick some tens there. Which is weird to me, why would you raise a ten there? A weak ten?
It's a, it's a bluff. We see that a lot, these high board, you can raise a pair, right?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. It's, it's not for value, it's bluff. It's a bluff and it's protection.
It's kinda, it's mergey, right? Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know how we proceed on turns, though, if we're doing that and turns a brick, I don't know what we do. Probably check and fold.
I mean, by river, we're trying to get them off weak aces. We're trying to get them off like ace five off, right?
I don't think we're like tripling off ten X, though.
If we get the, like, the right backdoors coming through, probably, yeah. You know, uncertain runouts, again, like, you're gonna be choosy about it, you're not just gonna blindly triple, but like, when, when you block the right thing, then yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna go for it.
Could we explore that node one step further on the last one, Louis?
Yeah, right, we raise some tens and then.
So can you click the raise, um, which size is it taking? The big size, right?
Five or eighty-three, either one, both are pretty, more eighty-three, I guess.
Then he calls you and then what?
Yeah, and give it like a six or a seven, maybe?
Yeah, if like.
No, five completes a lot of our gutters, though.
But I predict that then like ten four makes a good bluff to continue.
Okay, well, yeah.
Cause like the question is, when are we gonna be bluffing? Yep, ten four is blasting off.
The five is great for our, our raise.
Yeah. Um, Cindy, the word he used was not mercy, it was mergey. Mergey refers to, um, having like a mixture of like value and bluffs. It's not strictly polarized. It's like includes some middle of the range things that are both getting sometimes better hands to fold and sometimes getting worse hands to call.
Why is these strategies so different on the five and a six?
Uh, five is so good for our range, cuz we have four deuce and we're raising it, so we get to put a bunch of bluffs in a range, cuz we, the, the wheel got there on a six, uh, nothing got there.
Five, three as well.
Yeah, five, three as well.
If a king rolls up, for example.
I think we're done with it. Yeah, it's like terrible.
And then.
Yeah, king is disastrous.
We're playing the low stuff, basically, when we raise.
If like the ten or the three pairs, oh yeah, this is good.
We need.
The bottom half of the deck.
Something in there, a nine.
And it accelerates at like six and especially five.
Oh wait.
Shoot me, shoot me.
Shoot me, yeah. Yep, even with a gutter.
Yeah. Again, I don't really think we, at a hundred big blinds effective, I don't think we wanna continue without a spade in our hand.
Five with spade, do you do it?
Yes.
This one's still tempting, but I think you're right.
I know, it is tempting. I think it's close. Like, if you showed me this hand history and you raised here, I wouldn't hate it. Like, I would not be like calling you a fish or whatever.
Ace of spade is going wild?
Yeah.
The five, not so.
And the other ones are like, I like zero EV, low EV.
They're not folding.
No, they're not, they're worth a big.
Oh my gosh, look at all the, look at all the non-spades not folding.
We're supposed to do something here. Dirty, dirty poker. Gotta continue, oh no. We're gonna, oh no, Scotty, man, we're gonna make a four and then what?
I know, we're gonna make a four and then we're gonna lose anyway.
Hundred.
And then we're gonna pay.
We're never gonna be able to raise it. This is horrible, but we're not gonna fold. We have to lose more money.
Great.
Yeah.
Is this a good card?
Nothing is a good card. There are no good cards in the deck for us. We, we were just calling, cuz we had, because some.
Four. This is what we're getting for, basically, check, 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 check and then show down a side and then sometimes a four.
Wait, I think we're bluffing a spade now, on the turn?
We could bluff this nine, maybe. They checked down?
Yeah, that's right. We have another exit. We can bluff a spade when it comes.
But like, I just don't love bluffing. I don't love bluffing ace high here.
Hang on.
It's a bad ace, though. We can get better aces to fold.
The nine pair, when the nine pairs in monopone boards, pretty good for out of position.
Yeah, half pot, I think.
But I think that means, when the nine pairs is not able to barrel, so I think we win.
I'll go with half pot.
Like when the nine.
Yeah, but.
Really bad for in position, so he has to stop.
So.
We're not really excited for him to show down like pocket fours without a spade or like ace ten, you know, like those are sort of the hands, ace ten without a spade. Those are kind of like my, my bluff targets here.
Yeah, we get.
Well, but those are the hands we're beating. I'm interested in the hands that we can get to fold.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary here. I just feel like check, check and we win.
Bet, oh, man.
Yeah, you're right, and it's worth two big blinds. We expect to win something.
Yeah, oh.
Chappy, chappy. Nope, yes.
Six plays, right?
Damn it. I had to think.
Bluff, I know, I should have bluffed. That's what I would say to myself.
Wait, did we, uh, did we say in the study session yet? Congrats, Ken.
Oh, thanks.
Congrats, Ken.
Rest to you, Tim.
Thank you, no. I was, I was super impressed, um, obviously was hoping that you would have, uh, run like the sun at the final table, but way to go, man.
Yeah, I didn't, I was pretty card dead and got a couple weird spots.
You offered to buy up to forty percent of that.
I took twenty-five in the end, yep.
Yeah, but.
What was the score, you guys?
Forty, wow, man.
I didn't see it. What was the score?
Uh, sixty-three hundred.
Congratulations, Ken. Ken, good job, man.
Ken feels like a hot commodity now.
Wait, wait, so Tim, Tim had forty percent. How much did you have?
No, he had twenty-five. He wanted forty. I had to cut him back, cuz I had, I wasn't gonna, it was a second bullet and I didn't tell my backers I was gonna fire two. So I wanted.
No, it is. He went, he played one bullet, he lost, he felt bad. And then the next morning, it was like seven AM, he was like, oh, maybe I could go. But then he felt bad, so he didn't ask the backers.
It's like, damn, I posted it and you didn't respond, so sorry.
Oh, wait, Louis, you didn't have a chunk?
He had the first bullet.
I had that first bullet.
He missed the second bullet. He said, he didn't say it, and I didn't invoice him.
It was at seven AM.
He said I didn't invoice him.
I didn't get my invoice. Alright.
In the future, I will always invoice him from now on and give him a time to, a drop dead deadline.
The, the invoice. You better believe I was doing the math on, uh, what, twenty-five percent of sixty thousand? I was sitting at home and I was like, I was like, I already bought a fifteen thousand dollar new, you know, set of furniture and everything, so shit, I don't know how we're gonna pay for that.
We're getting there. That's two final tables in those events in three months, so.
Yeah, pretty good.
Yeah.
Maybe ten tournaments, that's pretty damn good.
That's pretty good, yeah. Did you feel like you just had a big edge at the final table, too?
Oh, no, 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 no. Uh, the final table, I think I was probably the fifth best player.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, yeah, there's, uh, there's some very good players at that table.
Oh, interesting. Nice. I mean, not nice, actually, like.
Yeah.
Stop playing tournaments with very good players.
The guy at my right, the guy at my right was way better. Uh, the black guy that won it, was, I played with him a lot of day one. I knew right away, he was very good. Um, the dude with the long hair is, makes a shit ton of final tables there, he's very good. And the girl is very good.
Okay, do, do you think any one of them would check raise here?
This is awful.
Maybe great.
These checks, these do say four, it's fine.
I think this is, I mean, this, this probably fits, got the spade.
Give me back doors, give me back doors.
With back doors, it's easy, without back.
You have one back door.
We're, we're in the.
You got a straight draw and you got the high spade, so, uh, it might be good. It seems like a fold.
Ace seven, you could consider it, maybe?
This feels good to me, honestly. It's all I need.
I'm not, I'm not considering it with ace seven. Maybe I should.
Just fold and move on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm out of line.
Raising is better than calling, you know?
So, what do we do with forty, like?
Five, seven, maybe?
Can we just look at this in a smaller stack depth? Real quick. I'm just curious, cuz I feel like these are check raises a lot for me.
Nope.
It's four suited?
It's not.
I think you just have so much to draw from, so like you have gutters, you have nine, seven, you have eight, seven, you have you have stuff that wraps around the ten, like jack nine. I, I like all that stuff better.
Yeah.
You have five, four, you have seven, seven, five, I feel like.
This, the suited version does it.
Exactly.
Ace seven and the ace four, so that instinct is right. They just needed to be, you just need the backdoor spade, the, the backdoor.
Even at forty?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll tell you what.
When you look at that chart, it just tells you something, cuz like you just have so many hands to choose from, so you just don't have to, you know.
I'll tell you what, though. Yesterday, I check raised queen ten suited, backdoor flush draw, two overs on a four, four, two or four, four, three, guy bet like half pot. Three tables left. He opened, he folded and showed ace king. So like, and then he runs me down to the bathroom, he's like, you had a four, didn't you? You had a four, right? Like, I just, shoulders. I mean, so you can get away with a lot, man.
Yeah, yeah, you can. And I think that one's not even theory, too. I think, I think queen high there is not supposed to checkers.
Wasn't sure, but I felt like he's, he's, they always, like, they c-bet every single flop, I'm like.
Oh, yeah.
I take a shot, I raise small, it wasn't even big, and I'm like, I'm done, I'll take my one shot and I'm, I'm done, I'm not gonna lose a ton, no big deal.
Yeah, it cost you, it cost you like five big blinds or so, right?
Yeah, and they just fold, ace king, it's like, what?
Hope he's not listening to the study session. Four, four, what?
Four, four, two or three, I forget.
Yeah, well, on those, like, even if you get called on your one shot, you can hit your, your pair, too.
Yeah, I get his pair, his spade.
Alright, do you think this one could be a raise?
No.
No. Do you raise any tens there?
Might not even be a call. We saw the queen flip earlier.
I don't think.
Yeah, we did.
It's a call.
I think, I think it's better for not having nines and eights, uh, because we've seen that like with the deuce, you know, deuce kicker, trade kicker, four kicker, it's better.
Yeah.
Right.
So more of a raise here or a call?
I'll block some balls.
Just call.
Think every.
I could see it raising, but like, I think we, our bluffs really wanna come from like jack X, I think it's more than anything.
So, yeah, look at the ten nine. Play it a hundred big blinds deep, do you? That's holding up.
I, I, I never do, Scotty.
My gosh, again, what kinds of, what kinds of hands do you wanna be holding once all the money goes in? Like, name the types of hands you wanna hold. Again, what kinds of, what kinds of hands do you want to be holding once all the money goes in? Like name the types of hands you want to hold.
Better than top pair, top kicker.
When I'm this deep, I only dream that, so it's easy.
So the ten X are mostly folding.
Yep.
Yeah. Sure.
Yeah, but not with the, but not with the, but not with the backdoor hearts. That's the thing.
Yeah, exactly. Hearts, hearts can go for it. And the raise is like starting to be competitive.
What do you? And then an ace? Okay.
Does it?
Hard.
And value. Those are your buffs and then your values like sets and straights.
And then this is like, okay, a jack with front door or backdoor.
We're bluffing.
Even without.
And we're value raising, right? I mean, we just got more bluffs than value here.
Oh, no, no, we got plenty of nut spades.
Yeah, but they're still draws.
There's value.
High equity draws though. They're, they're twelve out draws, so like, you know, how do you categorize them?
And then a naked ace of spade here. Okay.
That's more, that's more like two blow. And there again, that. No, not king ten, only king queen.
Okay, okay, okay.
King queen is good enough to raise for value. Okay, a little bit of king ten, more king queen.
Mostly still calling king queen.
Not king, king off. The king queen that, the king queen that raises I bet is the, is the hard.
Sorry, Scotty.
King queen up, blocks the nuts and we blocked the, the value.
And this board, it's, it's, you know, it's locked up equity. So if you don't have a straight, if you don't have a straight, like.
Yeah, exactly.
Might just be, you might just be like piling dead.
Call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gonna get us for eight more here.
Yep.
It looks like, um, body and I'm like, oh, I'm scared. What button am I gonna press? You know.
Do you have a fold button yet? Look for the fold.
This one kinda played itself.
Yeah, it did.
Uh.
Louis, you know, my fold button was broken with you last night.
I know. I know them. I know, I don't know what.
Weird how you, you click fold and it just keeps calling. It's weird.
By the way.
Night, I'm gonna show this hand later.
Jesus Christ.
No, it's not the one with you, Tim. It's the other one where I lose everything with ace king.
That one was weird. That one was just.
That was a weird river bluff on his part.
Yeah, jack five feels like it could be a raise.
It wasn't a bluff. The ace came in.
The check.
You guys want, you guys want to bluff this?
Yes.
Upper dangler.
Yes, this is the, this is as good as it gets. You got the upper, the backdoor flush.
Louis, you're always tempted by this garbage.
I know, man.
But I think this looks pretty good because it's not gappy. I think it's much better than having like queen five here. Much better than have jack.
Jack five, man.
Might do it.
This is the nuts.
I think we need a gut shot or some more like better overcard stuff.
I'm with Louis on this one. Louis, Louis given us some BS today, but they're saying that this one's alright.
Before you hit the raise, the one, here's the one thing I don't love about, I, I, I like the two, I like the two backdoors and the over, but I don't love hitting that over. Because then there's nine, ten, jack on the board when we hit our over.
You know, well, you don't have to love it, but like he has ace, he can have ace ten, he can have, you know, like he, you can draw out on him. He's not just gonna like barrel blindly.
Are you sure, Galen?
I, I'm pretty confident it's pretty good.
Yeah.
I pull from these, this, this bucketing.
And Danny might be.
Yeah, I'd brace it. Alright, click the red button.
Let's go for it.
That's the thing.
Free to a straight.
I think Tim, uh, Tim, Tim hit on a bunch of important things. Like you have a bunch of clear value targets and like if he has ace ten and things like that, the jack will be good. Like you can continue barreling a three, you can continue barreling a six, uh, diamond's an obvious one. There's a lot of good stuff.
I don't wanna do that barrel of three.
I'm with Danny.
Yeah, too. I guess it's a hundred big blind deep thing.
Yeah.
Is it pulling, uh, from the, uh, king more?
Yeah, probably more king five.
Yeah, it wants the, the, well, not even.
Not even.
Not even. I guess it's just a hundred big blinds. Maybe if you go to like, uh, sixty, it'll be like more prominent.
Yeah, for sure.
We're just, uh, yeah, we're stretching a little bit.
Not at all, Jake.
Let's go forty.
Queen two is in there, which is kinda funny.
Danny, good call. The gutter plus the four X or the jack plus the four X for the same reason, but a little bit more equity. Jack four.
Oh, we're, what? Okay, we're facing E P also.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, look at the low jack guys. He's not gonna, you're gonna have a lot less check raises.
Yeah, you're right. See, I'm, I'm paying like half attention, like.
If you get from the button, I bet you a lot of these. I gave you an out, Galen.
You did, Danny. You were trying to take care of me. Thank you.
Right. Let, let B money is right. We're looking for, uh.
I think Mr. B money is correct. It's gonna, a wider range is definitely gonna, you're gonna attack it more aggressively. So like nine, ten, four rainbow.
Because if, if we don't check raise against that button, I mean, jeez Louise.
You're gonna call into everything into question, right, Louis?
Everything. Okay, so he's right. It's because he's too E P.
Now, just pump it up to a hundred just for.
Oh.
My, my sanity.
Yeah, it should be in there. Yeah.
Okay, okay, good. I feel better now.
Hey, so he.
The, uh, the sizings creep up a little bit as we get deep. That was one of the things I noticed there.
Yeah, I mean, it's a difference of playing like twenty percent of cards versus like twenty percent of range and the button and cutoff playing against forty to like.
Forty to fifty, yeah.
That was gonna be a bad bluff.
Oh, we could do.
Oh, it's gonna be rough.
Can we do it with the ten? I, I think we can.
Wait, Scotty, what do you have?
I'm really not a, uh, he had queen, king off, so we were pretty dirty. Um, I'm not a fan of really turning a sign into a bluff.
Why not?
Cause you're blocking folds, really.
I think with a spade, you can just.
Can we call with the A side?
What, what folds do you block here? The spade, the spade.
You block ace, ace, jack, you block ace ten, you block.
Any of that to your check raise? You don't block folds.
Well, but that's also why it's kinda bad. He's calling us with like ace, jack, ace, king. He's, if he's folding anything, he's folding like ace, deuce, ace, three.
So, yeah, I, I mean. Okay, so like, let's say you check raise and he's got like ace, jack, and then you get a deuce on the turn. Then he's gonna start folding that kinda stuff.
You gotta barrel turn. He's never folding here to check raise here. Right?
I, uh, I don't, yeah, I don't wanna raise this. I think this is just, uh, just a call.
What? Just a what?
Call.
Okay.
I would call as well.
I mean, calling is probably.
Hello?
With the option, hello?
Oh, just testing my mic.
No worries. You should explore that though, Louis, uh, on the flop, like, uh, what his continuing construction is.
So, yeah, what can we raise with? Like, I wanna raise with like king seven.
Yeah, I, I think like, there's a lot of obvious good ones. I just don't like ace.
Nine, ten.
Okay, so.
Raise it a little king, jack here, but that's wrong, but I don't think it's crazy.
Uh, you got the kings with the king of spade over there that are kind of interacting with the five and the six, like king seven's a good one, king eight, king nine.
Yep.
Um.
Seven, nine, eight, eight, four.
Are those, what about those seven, four, nine fours? Are those front door and back door or just front door? I'm sorry, I said nine, four, ten, four is what I meant. The ones that are folding ma- mainly.
With these.
Yeah, just okay, mainly, it's just front door. Uh, king deuce is gonna obviously be the, the front door. The king four looks like it might have front and back in it though.
The king four.
Not really. You got a little with the ace though, a little with ace. So now the question I had really was, let's say you do check raise. And how, how is aces reacting? So you're not really using three, three. You have to use like.
Fifty-five, fifty-five, yeah.
And they're quite indifferent across the board. So like ace, jack.
That's funny. Uh, I don't think people are folding as jack to a check raise here. I am not, actually.
I don't know, with no spade, I could probably find a fold.
Oh, no, spade, sure, but even with the spade, look at the ace. I'm calling like.
I'm never folding the ace of spades, never folding, one hundred percent.
Yeah, I'm with you guys. I'm definitely continuing with the ace of spades, full frequency.
And then, I, this guy here check raised like a, a lot more than population, so that means that the, this liver here is just gone, right?
Mm-hmm. That's right, but, uh.
I'm calling.
Cause you need the church.
Yeah, I'm probably too sticky with ace king here, cause I'm just.
King is fine, right? But the other ones are not. Ace jack is not.
I was, I was even talking about without a spade. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Need a spade.
So you play check call.
Is this a?
That's the theme of today, right? Hundred big blinds deep. You, you must have a flush card in here.
Uh, are we strong? I think you're strong enough to put in a bet. Um, and I don't even think it has to be blocky. I think you could probably go for that number right there.
Yep, solver's gonna call you with like eight spades, seven spades.
Are the second nuts.
Do we ever dunk that turn card if it's not a spade?
You know, I don't hate that B money. I just don't know how prominent that strategy or effective it's gonna be at a hundred big blinds.
Oh, that's right. We're not, we're very deep.
Wait, is, is, is B money blaze?
No.
No.
This is B money.
Uh, he's been, he came in, I guess, from proper coaching, God's big toes group and all that.
Guys, I'm just another dog trip rag.
I thought you were bourgeois for a second.
Well, you've, uh, you found your, you found the right place. He's been here quite a few times over the last couple of months, actually.
Ah. So.
So we're talking about the, we're talking about the docking strategy on the turn is what we were, he was questioning.
Yep. I think we will dunk a fair bit.
I think it's gonna be less at a hundred bigs, super deep.
I don't know. Change, change like a four diamonds, you would set to four diamonds.
Oh, you want the four of diamonds? Okay.
There we go.
It, it's just like, yeah, you spotted it. Like whenever it comes like three low cards and a straight could complete and you're from the big blind. It's always a spot where you can leave small.
And you have.
You're usually the don't turn guy.
I wasn't paying attention. I was twittering.
I wanna check.
This board is like the draw, the driest combo. Absolutely no guys.
So we have to pick some stuff like that, right?
I don't mind, yeah, I don't mind expanding to this one.
Three ace of spades. Yeah, sorry, guy, again.
No, it's fine. I, I was just saying like we, we are unblocking the ace high this time, so I would see more. Now what? It's a blank man, you gotta keep going.
No, 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 we're done.
Are you?
Aren't we? Wait, are we not? I think we are.
Brick, I don't know, man.
Don't we have some? Don't we have some ace, ace, four, ace five that we'd rather?
Exactly, exactly. There's always like, we're gonna be distributing our check raise range around a variety of runouts and this is not the runout for this hand. There is, there's no.
Runout would be like spade. Then a ten.
Ten. Alright, so like. I think it's gonna be around like whatever your check raising construction is. If it's more draw heavy, you're gonna be more likely to check this, but if it's more like. You have like two pairs in here, king highs in here, it's gonna be more barely. Barrel three of spades, right? Oh yeah, I would say absolutely the three of spades. But I mean, the three is effectively a brick. I would be surprised to see it not have some continues. Three of diamonds, sorry.
We do, I think it's just a different segment of the range.
Yeah, that's the thing. It's like we always have more buffs than we need from the previous streets. We give up on some of them. So like our ace five keeps firing, our queen jack hits them.
Uh, we don't see it well here, but the spade is really going wild in the term. Like really wild.
Yes.
Yeah, that's where you have a lot of the dispute or the, uh, distributed frequencies, like the, the purple there. Are the value components from the previous street. They're symmetrically continuing. Uh, you see it kinda dissipating around the high cards because a lot of his continues. Now are more competitive with our value. That's why you see thicker bands around two of clubs. Then you would, let's say, the king of clubs, things like that. Um, the, the ones that are like rainbowy and wide, these are the ones that you would continue barreling wide on. So, yeah, that's, yeah, it's pretty interesting. Like you can just kinda look at this and see what's going on. But yeah, so looking at that, I would guess that this was a small purple band, so that would lead us to valuing just value. Barreling just value, which is not this hand.
So we guessed a nine, right? Or a ten? That was good for our hand. Uh, I'm gonna try it. I can, uh, say, uh.
Oh yeah, I mean, like, yeah, like, like ten especially.
Then strategy and then strategy with queen jack off. Boom, okay.
Cause of course it's just like, you know.
So we can bet.
It's gonna be hard for him to give us credit. We now have real outs to the nuts. We have, you know, eight, eight outs to the nuts here.
There's still quite a lot. Yeah, there's still quite a bit of checking, to be honest. The flush draws are really kinda, I think the presence of the flush draw is kind of dominating any of these straight components. Even like when you.
I agree with that. So you, you draw from this a little bit, but not, not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like an open ender's got value, like, okay, like you can barrel it some, but, uh, the presence of the flush is just. Yeah, you gotta let go now. Is that what we saw, Louis? You clicked kinda fast. Was that just checking or giving up on the turn?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent.
Yeah, okay.
Hmm, it's wild in some of these spots where you're just like, you, it really is just like made hands and draws, um, to a large extent.
Yeah, man, you just still have to get fancy verse the earlier positions. They're not messing around, so why are we?
We calling us? I'm not.
Uh, do you ever, do you ever check raise this? No, you don't.
No, I just give up.
Never.
You gotta call once.
No, I don't.
See, I, I, it's already, it's ingrained in my mind. I've got, I've got shenanigans in my mind. Like if it was the cutoff for the button, like. You might be able to do something, but LoJack, I think you just get out of the way. Like, what are we drawing?
I don't like to, I don't like to pile when I may have zero percent equity.
Ooh, so we saw in our other flop earlier where we were calling with gut shots, but not here.
Was it a mono board without?
Yeah, it was a mono board, but it, it was a mono board, but it was a mono board that didn't hit his range so well.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the, uh, that's an important consideration, Scotty, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, he's got so many folds on nine, three, two, and, and he has.
Yeah.
Um, zero.
I had an over card.
Ace jack.
Well, I guess here we. Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same hand.
Ace jack.
Oh, we gotta check raise this one, right?
Wow.
No, we don't.
Drive that frequency down as well. Yeah. We don't have offsuit twos.
We wrap around the.
But once again, we do not, we do not wrap around the king. Uh, once again, I wanna drive my, um, my, uh, aggression here, uh, mainly towards hands with backdoors.
Backdoor, Jack and ten, Jack and ace, you know?
I don't know if you have enough Louis, we're kind of deep, man. We're kind of, we're kind of deep. It's low Jack too, man. Like I, it's the same thing, like, maybe if it was cut off her button.
Ace five of spades, the nuts, but even if it's cut off her button, like. Pairs and trips and straights.
Hey, okay Louis, I will, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll split the difference with you. If you had a suited queen ten with a backdoor flush.
That's the easy one. That's.
I'm sold. You're too wide then. We're too wide here. I don't think calling's good either Danny.
Keep it easy. That's all you have to do.
Yeah, just fold, fold.
Put up different pairs though. Let me see if like king eight, eight or king nine.
Threes, are we doing?
I'm curious of king eight, eight.
What about tens?
I think you need a better kicker.
I kind of like pocket threes. I like pocket threes.
I think we're, against EP, I think it's like king, queen only and the rest are calling.
King eight, eight, what happened?
Uh, yeah.
Oh my god.
Oh, wait, what is this?
I just was curious if the pair would have changed it at all, cuz now we got some kind of draw.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But yeah, let's take it back to King deuce, deuce and see what our strategy is. I'm predicting it's stuff like.
I like three, three. I like three, three and four, four. I like whoever was going with that. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
It was King deuce, deuce, I think.
Yeah, but not, not with queen ten.
So yeah, high, low aces. Uh, queen jack, queen ten, queen nine with backdoors, not without.
Look at the check raising composition. Like you just don't check raise like your naked kings here.
And stuff like four, four, five, four, six. Yeah, exactly.
Four, six. Yeah, so like.
Actually, it was very different on king eight, eight, Ken.
Yeah, if we know really value raising our king X, then that really drives your bluff way down.
Well, it shifts them to like. Drawy type hands, like look at the, look at the. Five, three, four, three, four, five.
Yeah, this range is hyper polar.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we have deuces and we have double backdoors basically.
Yeah, you kind of just.
Low ace king as a treat.
Yeah, I was gonna say ace king.
Or the backdoors with the over, with the aces.
Right. Alright. Hundred, hundred big blinds, double backdoor. That's like such a, such a theme of today.
Yeah, cuz remember the big blind versus low jack, we owe, we don't meet MDF on most flops.
Right.
And we don't.
And even, so the queen ten suited that was continuing was primarily through a call as well. Cuz we wanna like spike a queen and keep the pot small or like, I don't know, it's like too, not polar enough, right, Tim?
Right. One of the things I keep wanting to say, like, what kind of hand do you want to see on river and what kind of river do you want to see?
Yeah.
It was like those wheel draws, I can name, I can name the cards I wanna see by turn and river.
When I called this guy twice.
Were he, did he bet the flow?
Nah, not on this board.
Think you gotta, you got the, this, this brings the, the, the straight.
But no spade, man.
Doesn't matter. We buckle out. Oh, what a wonderful river.
Oh, Jesus God.
It's gonna go check, check like ninety per, seventy-five percent of the time here.
I mean, that's true. It's, he's gonna check back a lot. Even if like rivers like this are exactly why we would like to have one spade in hand. Cuz like if we have one spade, we don't have a flush.
Do we ever dunk this?
No.
Maybe with range, yes, but not with this hand. I don't think.
Maybe dunking is easier than folding here is pretty good cuz say we check, he bats. It's a four liner. For the straight or flush.
But if you dock, you gotta make it somewhat of a value size, I would think, right?
No, no.
Not really big, but.
That's a bet. But, but if we get called, do we ever win if we don't can get called?
He's.
Nope.
Does he have to call? A jack or better without a spade for ten percent?
Yeah, like two pairs that are better than ours probably.
That's a question.
Okay, so.
Like Jack ten.
Probably better to check here. I like Danny's reasoning. If we bet nothing, that we don't, we don't get value from anything. Like he's not gonna call with that jack.
Yeah, he might call Jack ten, right? But that's beating us.
Now, do we need to call here?
Jack seven, Jack nine.
No.
Sure.
I don't know.
What do you call with?
Spades. Betting one point five X pot, we don't have to call a lot.
Okay, so what's a worse spade you call?
In game, king.
A king? Queen here?
It's gotta be much lower than king.
So here's the thing, we're leading, are we, like if we're leading our, our best flush draws, we're just screwed here. So we, we might not even have like king and queen.
So you can't fold a straight, right? You gotta call with an eight, you gotta call with like king, queen. You gotta call with.
I think against this size, you can fold a straight.
You are, you, you folding?
I mean, you could, not king, queen, probably, but an, a bear eight, I would fold.
Okay.
Like really, if I'm just folding, but I'm curious what our leading range is and what that leaves us left to call with in solver land.
Eight of spades.
I suppose we still have to, we're always gonna have some nutted flushes in range, but low frequency, most of them are probably leading.
This is the eight.
No bluff.
So, I mean, we got some.
Holding the seven of spade. Calling the eight of spade. So we need like the eight of spade. Nine of spade is on the board.
Trip jacks, call, Jack ten some. What's queen ten a straight?
Uh.
And has a spade.
Second pair.
Spade.
I also got a spade.
Oh, yeah.
So it's calling trip jacks, but folding the eight.
This is the jacks, oh, they're dolm, so it doesn't care if it has a spade or not.
It's picking some two pairs to call.
It wants to block the jack more than, like ten, eight and nine, eight are folding.
Yeah.
Wait, what's our leading range? That's why I wanted to see first our leading range. Do we have? Yeah, so we're leading most of our nut flushes. Which leaves us a little sparse and have to call some other stuff, I guess, in theory.
Run over that, run over like that, the. The what? Calling a set and folding some straights.
There is, huh?
Well, no, that was a spade.
The sevens. The sevens are, but look at the Jack, Jack.
Like Jack eight, there are no spade.
Yeah, it's a straight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
King, queen, no spade? No, king, queen, spade only.
Look at the queen of spade folding.
What? Not folding queen spades, huh?
Okay, the queen is playing folding. Why would it not want to have the queen? Cuz if I have the queen, I'm calling every time.
Weirdo.
Tell me why, Scotty.
I don't know.
Well, figure it out.
Because you're, because he has the ace of the king, that's why. At this size, because, because look at his range, why?
No, he has some smaller flushes that he calls with. There has to be something with the queen and his sizing that inter, intermingle or something like that.
Ah. Is it because he's bluffing?
No, he can't bluff with the queen of spades. The queen of spades can't block a bluff.
But it's a queen.
That's the problem with these. I'm happy to overfold because the ninety-nine percent of the people I'm gonna be playing against are never finding a bluff there.
Yeah.
It's in can.
Not at this guy, and they're not bluffing this size.
This guy is out here saying vamos, vamos, okay?
He can have it.
Uh, I don't know about that.
One out of a hundred guys capable of donating, it's all his.
I don't know about that.
Ninety percent is not bluffing.
Okay.
The idea is not to never get bluffed. That's not good poker. I'm not telling you guys this, I'm telling me this because that's my biggest.
Yeah, definitely.
Not wanting to get bluffed.
He has the stone cold nuts.
Who we raise here?
I don't hate it.
King of spade.
Um, yeah, exactly. King of spades wrapped around the queen.
Queen is not great for his range.
You just call, right?
Seems close. It's, yeah, I know, I can see calling, I can see raising.
Raising a lot.
Okay, well, both, that's why I can see both of those, alright.
Spade.
Dunk, dunk, oh, not dunkly raised.
Yeah, continue. We also have, we also have a nine as an out.
Small or medium?
Kind of medium when the flush and straight are completing, it's kind of depolarizing. So I don't think we're gonna go bigger than like eighty-three, we might go.
It's like, I think it's more like small.
Yeah, my money's on fifty-five. I don't know.
Maybe you're right, let's see.
All the small ones.
They're both in there. Yeah.
And twenty, all the small ones are in them.
Oh, he folds.
He folds a hand we were beating anyway.
Oh, what are we gonna do here?
Fold.
Just a mark?
Yeah, it's not, no spade, no heart, no straight interaction, no nothing. Like name the turn in the river you wanna see.
Ace, ace.
Yeah, okay.
It's easy for me.
That's a weird spot cuz he shouldn't have too many small bets in that position.
What about a check raise here? Am I gonna scam myself once more today?
I don't like check raising this because it doesn't have backdoor straights. I would rather do it with something like five, four. And I'd rather do it with something like queen, jack, queen ten.
We need like queen five here or ace five.
No, not, ace five is better, but problem with queen five is it still doesn't have backdoor straights.
Do you do it with jack four?
No.
Of hearts.
Of hearts? No.
Uh, you just call her, you gotta defend back.
It's bold. Just fold.
Do you fold every hard combos?
No, no, like ace has good enough. Stuff with, um, stuff with double backdoors is good enough, like five, four of hearts and raising probably. Queen, jack of hearts is continuing somehow.
Oh.
Double, backdoor straight, backdoor flush.
Okay, so we have the queen four, which is not a thing. Queen deuce, hmm, you really want the, the spade, right? King three, three.
But then check out, check out five, four, five, four is going.
Five, four.
Yeah. Check out queen, jack. Queen, jack's good.
Five, three. Queen, jack?
Yeah, exactly.
So. That's easy to find. The kings, kings are, okay, top pair.
Pair.
So these are basically all spades. Two. Just fold?
Uh, yeah. It's ace king.
Yeah, I think so. I think if you had a flush card, like nine, you could, uh, like eight, six off with the eight of spades. Might make a good race. Might make a good bluff.
Let's look at this. Eight, six off with the eight of spade.
Well, we have a pair, so. I would, why would you call?
Yeah. So a lot of sixes are raising when you have a six and a spade. So ace sideboard, you can raise that bottom card. If there's a flush draw, you blow, you. I have extra equity with the flush. Oh, this is, this gotta be a check rate, right? Yeah. Oh my goodness, watch out, Lewis is.
That's not the card we wanted. We wanted to see a five, a seven, a spade, a six, an ace. We are giving up.
Hold.
What are we doing?
I'm not sure, by the way, how much we wanted to see an ace.
We're trying to.
I mean, it's not that we're, it's not, we're not stacking off, but like, you know, it improves our equity.
You gotta call one.
Like, we're gonna continue, like if an ace can't be a check call.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. No, not that I'm just stacking off on any of those cards. Um, um, Louis, we're a hundred big blinds, uh, check raising the big blind against a low jack, single raise pot.
Call. We haven't lost enough money yet.
Ah, I like that. I like that. It appeased my mind.
I have, I have, I have a heuristic, like when we're deep stacked, do we check raise more backdoor flush draws?
No.
Cause not more backdoor, not more backdoor than front door, but we really only are paying attention to the front door and the backdoor. Like we've seen a bunch of these sims. Stuff without any flush interaction is just gone, it's just.
Yeah.
Bucked. We need two form of extra equity to check.
But I, I find shallow, you just never check raise backdoor flush draws cuz it's like.
Oh yeah, that's, that's true, yeah.
Yeah, but like, I feel like deep stacked, you do it a fair bit, if you like your cards.
Not against the low jack.
Yeah.
Yeah, Louis, I think that's spot on.
Against the buttons, we saw that it was a big thing.
Yeah.
There's enough play here that we can check raise at the backdoor, see the flush card on the turn, bet big. And then on the river, either value better bluff, like.
But this is just, this is just against late position?
Yeah, this is against LoJack.
Yes, the, the, you check raise your backdoor more against late position.
King five of hearts, Louis, check on this. Let's go, let's go.
Backdoor.
This is it.
One backdoor.
We've been looking for it. And we missed it.
Yeah, it's just.
Geez, Louis.
Okay, but it's mixing, it's not crazy.
Yeah.
Five percent. Good.
Great.
That's a thing.
You know, you.
Oh, we're done with this. We're done.
Oh, I know.
We're not that. We are not.
We're done.
We're not Jack pairs, that's good.
That's good, right?
We just wrapped a Jack.
We're not check raising Jack, we're check raising fours, not jazz.
But also like we, we have hands that still have like outs to improve here, like spades.
Um, I mean, we can't, we can't fold a better hand now, right?
Yeah, king high is gonna fold.
Yeah, okay, I feel like it's king high cool and I think it's cool in the check raise, no?
Uh, ace high is gonna fold.
What on this?
Spades might fold, spades might fold now.
Yeah, maybe. This is a sexy spot to, uh, barrel deuces and threes.
Yeah.
You unblock everything. You have the nut low. You can't win by checking.
Okay, let's give it up. I think we need a heart. We had a heart with the.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, we had a heart, yeah.
Alright, there's the give up.
Bold.
We could've won.
I'm the nine of spade.
That's not enough.
I think, I think that makes it a call. Yeah.
Okay, so we said we needed two form of equity, so we have the spade. We have the overcard with the A's, but we have got this straight interaction. Think it's a good one.
I just think it's a little bit, a little bit close to top range and also the nine of spades is not very nutty. So like when we start raising it, we start isolating ourselves against like better flush draws. Whereas, uh, in a check called pot, uh, we keep just more like one pair type hands, airballs, you know?
Yeah, I think it's gonna cool with like low frequency of raise, wow, fold.
Nope.
Wow, everyone is wrong.
I guess we have, if, if you have ace of spade, I guess.
I was right.
I guess we blocked the blush, right? With the nine.
Uh, but also the nine is kind of important for, you know, like various straight runouts.
I thought the nine was blocking like good stuff here.
Can we look it up?
We're blocking ten. I mean, we are, yeah, it's like, it's one of those one.
It's not, I'm not worried about blocking his bluff now. I am interested that it makes strong hands on a lot of runouts. But I think we still want the ace of spades or.
Uh, here's some, here's some raise, raise with ace of spades.
It's just not good enough.
That nine's no good.
Uh, I wanna hold nine, seven.
But what if you had nine, seven off, so then you had the seven of spade?
Better, maybe, better.
I think we can, I think we can fold, fold, oh wow, fold.
Watch me.
I, 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 I think folding is fifty percent makes sense, but against thirty percent, like we got a pair.
Yeah, that's why we.
That's something we've seen.
That's what we call.
That's something we've seen in a bunch of these.
Uh.
Do we have a full pair share?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. Maybe.
No backdoor, no meaningful straight draw. Like, it's just like.
You like never go to showdown as well, right? Cuz like think of the low jack's range, it's like mostly big cards, so just connect on this, you know?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, we have to call.
Exactly, they're either already ahead of us or they're drawing something strong.
Yeah, like they're gonna have ace, jack, a tom, which is just gonna.
Exactly, like are we really excited to station off against ace, jack? Like, we're like flipping and.
But we have.
But we have, but they have, he have buffs, so you cannot fold anything ev- every time.
No, so, I mean, you saw the sim, like, a balanced range there, holds bottom pairs sometimes.
I wanna raise.
Oh, yeah, I think raising this is fine, through to a straight, through to a flush.
Tell you what, then, we're gonna get scammed, it's gonna be a pure fold.
It's gonna be a pure.
Uh. But there's a draw on the six to three, and you need to have the five or the four, like, the inside of the draw, that's.
Overbar, it's just a fold.
Got shot driven.
No.
Oh, you can even call.
Mostly fold.
It's gonna be another one of the bottom pair.
This was not a fold.
This, this.
Ace of spades is really important.
This is what we were waiting for.
This was a race, I call.
For all this.
More raise. With the high, low.
Raise, it's, it, that, that, we, he, he misses this board so bad.
Boom, shakara.
Yeah. Makes us.
Yeah, he just misses that.
Oh, man, we got him.
Better aces to fold.
Hold king seven.
Then high boards, uh, are they good for us or for the low check, or it's equal, equal bet? What did you say?
Uh, it's never equal, he pretty much has the advantage on all boards, but it helps us a little bit in catching up. But we're still behind, we're pretty much always behind. It's just a question of how, how far we're behind, sometimes we're a little bit behind, and sometimes we're smoked. We would raise something like Jack ten if it had a backdoor flush draw, maybe, but this, no good.
You hold.
Snap, fold.
Maybe you could have, yeah, struck four, yeah.
We need a three space.
Only have one, we only have one out, we're out.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, one out, it's pretty dark.
Yeah.
Snap, fold a seven without a backdoor.
We should know.
Louis, is this locked into giving us just like the most garbage hands? Is it only giving us offsuit aces?
I've not touched anything today.
Okay, it might just be random.
We raise.
No, cause we've seen, we've seen other stuff.
I gotcha.
This deep, I like. Sometimes. Play the flush, sometimes.
Just a four.
Ace of spades, I bet. Cause I just, I just always go like a couple steps forward on those hands, okay, we call now, and then there's a huge bid on the turn, and it was a spade, oh my god, we have a flush draw, great. And then we call again, and then the river's the fourth spade, and he bets huge, are we excited to have the seven of spades in your hand? No.
No.
Yeah, that's true.
Whereas like you go through that runout, and you have the ace of spades, and you're like, oh my god, I have the nuts, I'm getting paid.
But sometimes he, he's gonna check behind them, turn, turn, check, check.
Yeah.
So when he bets big later on, then you can fold easily.
King of spades.
Yeah, king of spades, three to a straight, I kinda wanna continue with this hand.
Continue by raising?
I think so, I think it's not good enough to call, right? But it's like.
Okay, I am on board.
Yeah. Holding a lot, it's pretty bad.
Yeah. Barely.
Really the turn card we wanted to see.
We just check call now, right? Or.
Yeah, it's like we have a pair with a redraw.
Can we have a best seven?
No.
We pick a spade.
I don't know.
I think the spade overrides the pair of eights.
It's both, our pair of eights could be good, and if not, we have good backup, right? I think we could bet seven or check.
I'm with seven. Bet small.
Could even go half pot.
Yeah, you wanna call a raise.
I just wanna like nudge some money in against the king, queen with the queen of spades.
Ace, jack, kind of hands, the gig is up, we check.
I think so, we now have fourth pair. Yeah.
I'm curious if we were ever, um, check raise bluffing.
That'd be pretty savage. Not this hand.
No, I.
Spade, or maybe two hearts or something.
We fold a gach.
Yep. Uh.
Um, and then one spade, what do you do?
Nine, eight is like a notorious reverse implied heads, hand, right?
Nine, eight, you can raise a little bit, or call.
With the spade.
With, with a spade.
Yeah. With the spade. Cause, uh, yeah, he has sixteen combos of ace king, when that check hits.
Nothing here, right? We just fold?
It's kinda close, I, I can see some merit, but.
How bad was calling?
Pretty bad.
Like minus point two.
Okay.
Wanna check raise here, son, or we just fold?
Just fold.
Just fold.
You never raise here, Scotty?
Nope.
Okay.
I love how like Louis liked to bait us, you know, sometimes with like, with good ideas and sometimes with bad ideas.
Yeah, but the hundred fifty eight against Scotty, I have no chance to bait him, it's just like.
Yeah.
No, yes, no.
Check, call, raise, fold.
They're just testing us, so, LP.
And he's better than me at this part.
Hold. Fold this misery.
Easy, we don't wanna raise, we don't wanna.
We don't wanna raise. There could be a sliver of call, we wanna fold.
Jesus Christ. Lord, save me from myself. Hmm, gotta call, right?
Or it is.
Just fold.
I think it's fishy, but whenever I see this, I hear Matt Affleck say, you can't fold a pair here.
You can fold a pair.
You can.
Probably like one of the worst pop to put chips in, but it's like, oh, see, you can.
The only loser, a little bit.
The, the ones where we.
Thirty-three big blinds per hundred.
Just a little bit, little thirty-three.
So you are folding some pairs.
Yeah, you just, you had to have the spade there, and even then, you're not happy.
At this deep, you want to have to make the nuts.
Hold, no.
Eh, oh, I thought that was ace spades for a second, nope, uh, fold.
How often can we completely whiff?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, you've played poker, you can whiff for like hundreds of hands straight, right?
Every time, yeah.
Thousand, not if you play, not if you play twelve tables.
I'm not insta-folding this.
Think it's cool.
So you gotta what?
Snap, fold.
Snap, fold, I don't know.
I'm gonna think before I fold.
Think and fold.
Yeah, now we're gonna fold it.
Okay, think and fold.
Yeah, cause it was up, cause it was ninety-eight point nines, and all the other ones would have been ninety-nine point seven.
Yeah.
So this is the board, not good, okay.
Through this guy, this is the board, but this is not the hand.
Th- this is not.
Yeah.
The, this, this is, right? Hmm, I, I, I was, I was.
We just called it king, queen. We just called it king, queens.
We had this.
And I could see calling, I don't know.
Why, we just folded king, queen on the previous.
Oh, I didn't see the previous.
Do you raise with the queen of spades?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
You call with, you call with this, and you call with the queen of spades.
I think the queen of spades is gonna start to raise a little bit.
I don't care what we did on the previous board, you can call here.
Yep, queen of spades is raising some.
I didn't see that, did the queen, I didn't see the queen of spades raise.
Yeah, it's raising a little bit.
Okay.
Like ten percent.
Spades never really, and queen of spades does raise some.
Oh, there's the raises, okay, I see it. Queen of spades.
And actually, the double backdoor, yeah, double backdoor.
I mean, it's kinda nice to block some, some top pair hands.
Now, call.
Based on the one we just saw, that you actually can call this.
I think that, yeah, yeah, cause we can, we can hit an ace, and that will be really good against his aces.
The deuce is also extremely clean, I mean, we have the nut deuce, though.
Yeah, we, we, we also win sometimes.
Okay, third one, check, check, we're very deep, do we have a black betting strategy with other types of hands? Like a.
Uh, with other types of hands, definitely, we can block that some hands, but yeah.
Nine or a jack, you block?
Sure, sure.
What size?
Jack, you might bet, bet six chips.